Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 20th regular meeting of the Zion City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Mayor King?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Berman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? All right, thank you, Mr. Berman. Leading us in prayer this evening is Pastor Dave Adams from New Song Ministries. Good to see you again, Pastor Dave.
Good to see you there in the City Council's presence. Father, we are so thankful, and I don't ever want to stop being thankful. You've been good. I thank you for this great city. Lord, I love this city. We love this city. I thank you for a mayor who loves this city. And I thank you for this town council. And I thank you for all the people that are surrounding me in this room right now with the wisdom and the knowledge of their respective departments, Lord, and the expertise and the passion and the zeal and the energy that they put forth so that this city can rest easy. And Father, we thank you for all of the things that they will be looking at tonight. We pray for wisdom in each one of them. Lord, there are things in our city that are wanting, that we need wisdom. And I thank you for the dedication. And I pray for unity amongst these teens, amongst these departments, and even in our community to have unity, Lord. So we thank you for this city. We pray your blessings upon it, the businesses, and the schools, and the people. Lord, we thank you for what you have done and for what you will do, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dave. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? Thank you. If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Next is citizen comments, item number five. Just a procedure for public comments at city council meetings. The opportunity to speak to the council is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the city. The city council appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The council strives to make the best decisions for the city, and public input is very helpful. The city must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. It is unlawful for any person to disturb or interrupt a meeting of the city council. Please be respectful for the duties of the city council and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name, address, and address your comments to the council. Please limit your comments no more than three minutes. Please be factual, courteous, and the council requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the council or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. Also know that the city council does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Those will be answered during the departmental commentary. And given that we have a full house tonight, our first guest tonight is Willie Simpson.
Hello, my name is Willie Simpson, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the project for Shepherd's Crossing. I've talked to several people in the community and all of the professionals involved, including the manager of Shepherd's Crossing. They would like to see the community finished and fully developed, as it will add more families to the area, which will cater to the local businesses and also create more property taxes for the city of Zion. So I'm here just asking for the city council to look at this very hard. It's also going to improve the property values throughout the city of Zion. New construction homes seem to have a little higher value, which will also pull the values of the neighborhood properties up also. I'm just giving this as my experience there years as a real estate broker here in Lake County. And I own a lot there in Zion, and I'm a founder resident of Zion. I've lived in Zion for ten years, so just wanted to bring that to the table and express my approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Kathy Champagne.
I would like to address you about the proposed development at Shepherd's Crossing. This is being proposed by D.R. Horton, which is an entity worth $5.5 billion. Zion's BAV is approximately $400 million. We don't need to underwrite them. They can avoid the impact fees. So also, the average size of a house on Sarah Lane, and I got this from the spreadsheet from the Lake County tax area, is about 2,099 square feet. They're proposing their largest house to be about 1,800 square feet. The average house on Sarah Lane is about $224,000. They're proposing to sell these smaller homes for $350,000. The tax impact on our current residents in that subdivision could be as high as $5,500. So I am asking that, and I too would like to see this subdivision expanded, developed, and more people here, but please think about what you're going to do to current residents under this situation. If they go smaller homes for more money, how it could impact existing tax orders, because we have people who were, there was somebody here the other week that were planning a zoning meeting that's been trying to sell this home and has been unable to. It may be more than one if the taxes go up that much. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of regular meeting held on February 6, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on February 6, 2024 at 8:17 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
So moved by McDowell, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Bills vouchers 145222 through 145383 drawn on Huntington National Bank.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven, consider passing ordinances as follows. 7A, amending section 2.5 of the Zion Municipal Code regarding purchases for the city of Zion per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We have not changed, we have a cap of, or bid requirement of $10,000 in accordance with prior state statute. Anything over $10,000 we had to go out to bid for, that has not been changed or increased in over 20 years. I don't know the exact date, but I know it's been more than 20. The state has changed their threshold to allow us to look at $25,000 before we have to go out to bid. We're trying to do that because what's happened is over, obviously, over the 20 years, inflation, cost of purchasing, you know, equipment, things like that, has gone up quite significantly. And we're hitting a threshold now where just normal equipment supplies needed for outfitting squad cars or other things that we use, small equipment that we use to purchase that we just need for operations, has now creeped up over that $10,000 threshold. And the intent of bids was never to require, to hinder operations for us, just purchasing supplies, but rather on larger projects and larger pieces of equipment to make sure we had competitive pricing. So it's become very cumbersome at a $10,000 level to, while we still get quotes under $25,000, going out to bid really does prohibit our ability to operate, especially when there's very limited suppliers, in some cases, very specialized equipment. So we're recommending the increase in the code from the $10,000 cap to $25,000.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions or comments?
What took so long?
Believe me, the department hasn't been asking me for this for a while. We also had to make sure the state was in agreement with them to lead the charge.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven B regarding the disposition of surplus property in the fire department per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. I'm handling this on behalf of Chief Justice Streed tonight. He's requesting that we declare an old and unusable generator surplus property in order to properly dispose of the equipment. This was a ESDA central generator that, old, broken, we've been patching together for years, that we finally have just had a point that continuing to repair it exceeds the value of replacement. So rather than having it just sit out there and become quarters of old equipment, we are looking to get it declared a surplus, and then we'll figure out how best to dispose of it, whether it's just garbage, we can get scrap value, or if there is some secondary market value that we would dispose of it that way based on what's the best results are. So I recommend approval of declaring the Generac 40 kilowatt generator, model 0043731, serial number 3556593 as surplus property.
All right. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven C, authorizing and improving the purchase of products from Ultra Stroll Communications, Inc., for laptops and related equipment for the Detective Bureau and the Police Department per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. In a continued effort to provide the best equipment to employees, I've attached a quote for purchase of eight new laptop computers for the Detective Bureau. These laptops are semi-organized for infield use and squad car. Additionally, they will double for use in the office with a purchase of the dock, of the dock station. Due to the nature of this, of use with these devices, I included in this quote both a desktop docking station as well as the five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. Additionally, this item was budgeted for in the fiscal year 24 jet speed budget and qualifies for reimbursement to the city in respect where request approval was presented.
All right. There are a motion to authorize and approve the purchase of the Ultra Stroll Communication. So moved. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Mayor King?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item eight, discussion authorization approval. 8A, consider zoning docket 24Z-4 in ordinance requesting a variance to section 10-491B of Zion Municipal Code to reduce the minimum livable square footage from 2,000 square feet to not less than 1,600 square feet for a two-story, single home, family home per Director Ianson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval in absence of Director Ianson, Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We have a vacation day from one department head, a sick day, and an anniversary for another, so we're down three department heads tonight, so I'm working on covering those stuff. The next four items actually all relate to the zoning docket 24Z4. We need to take each one individually as a motion, but I'd like to just kind of address the entirety of the project. The first one that you're looking at, as mentioned, is reducing the livable square footage from 2,000, in the code, from 2,000 square feet to 1,600. There's also a, the first three are square footage, there's also a foundation requirement reduction from 1,000 to 579. And from 579 to 865, but they're looking for the 579 variance. The third is a minimum garage size of 500 square feet down to 425. And then the final is, relates to plant unit development, PUD, that expired in fall of last year that had impact fees for that development stated in it. We also, we have a set amount in our code for impact fees that is higher than the amount that was in the unit development. So what the proposal was is that the PUD that just expired for that development at the end of last year, that that kind of be extended and just adjusted for inflation to match the kind of the market and the margins on residential development, rather than what's in our code. This would still be, and we can get, well, I can revisit that on the items, but I think what's in the code is 21,054 for a three-bedroom and 20, or I think it's 21,987 for a four. We're looking at 13,860 per unit and for a four-bedroom and 12,254 for a three-bedroom. I can address any of the questions and comments. Again, as Kathy Champagne brought up, I understand that this may have an impact on housing values in that area, but it's unfortunately kind of a catch-22 that we have of, for taxes to reduce, we need to increase tax base. So our options are to not develop and not have those bases go up, or grow that base and hopefully pull the property values that set up everything up. And then the way that tax levies calculations work, values go up, the rate goes down, so that that tax base is shared among everyone. Obviously, it depends on how much value individual properties go up. Some will go up more than others, but the overall idea is growth of tax base over that, over time. That's the only way to get the revenue needed and reduce that burden on the city as a whole. We are, are also looking at increasing our population base. We've talked about Home Rule authority and a lot of tools that aren't available to us under Home Rule, and if we can grow population and continue that trend for the 2030 census, that opens up a lot of tools for us to address property housing and other things. So that's part of our comprehensive plan as well, is to encourage residential development. There's very limited land available for that within the city, so if we can get good residential development, we do want to take advantage of that. As far as subsidizing of the impact fees, I, without looking at specific financials and things like that, I do know that new construction margins are very difficult for housing. Retail, or resale of existing houses, a lot of people are getting good profits from that because they bought them at prior times, but while housing values have gone up and the market has gone up, so has the cost of materials and construction and labor, so that margin isn't as big as you might think, and these differences in impact fees of 10, you know, $9,000, $10,000 a unit could make a difference of killing a development opportunity versus it continuing on. So we'd still want the development even without impact fees, though obviously the intent is to have these impact fees address additional demands on infrastructure, schools, things of that nature, which we still, at an inflationary adjusted amount as indicated here, we feel will address those issues. So that's a long summary of all the issues, but as the mayor pointed out, the first item in front of us is the livable square footage reduction from 2,000 square feet to 1,600 square feet.
Is there a motion to reduce the minimum livable square footage from 2,000 square feet to 1,600?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell?
So I have a question since...
I was going to say, questions or comments?
Yeah. I was at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting when they, when this was proposed. One of my questions is, the current five houses or so that are vacant, building these, developing these 35 lots, how does that, how does that affect those vacant properties in a sense of?
Well, and that's, and that's a hard thing to address as well, because, you know, I have a friend who's a good Realtor in the area, and houses are still getting snatched up pretty quickly once they're on the market. So there could be a lot of factors when somebody says they're unable to sell their house as to condition, asking price, looking at that. So without further details, it's hard to determine the reason for that. Some places are, some people are just holding out, going, I'm fine with this, let's see where the market goes. I'll throw it out there as a listing at 300, and if I get it, I get it. So I don't know what the situation is, but the market is still strong on sale of property.
I mean, Administrator Nabel, one of the residents that spoke at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting talked about his property taxes are already $10,000, and at the point, he's at the point where he is considered walking away, because, you know, if this proposal happens and, you know, these lots are developed, what's that going to, what's that going to do for his property taxes? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but my, I also wanted to ask, because I don't recall what the answer was. What, the development of the 35 lots, and maybe this is to the developer, is, are these going to be built all at once, or over time, or like, what period of time are we talking?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Bauer. I'm an attorney and a title manager with D.R. Martin and Clint West, which is the advocate for the four action items that are being discussed at the moment, items 8A through 8D. Commissioner, in response to your question, the intent, based on communications that I've had, as we've seen today with division leadership, is to initially pursue five building permits, start those homes, and then do that on a rolling basis, perhaps as quickly as five per month.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yeah. Just in general, what's the impetus behind reducing the square footage? Why is that being done?
So naturally, anytime we evaluate an opportunity to build homes within a given market, we are conscious of the specific KSP, average sales price of homes within that market. Accordingly, we always intend to build homes that are appropriate for the market and can ultimately be sold at ASPs that are consistent with what the market can bear. As you can imagine, we wouldn't want to see that, because that would be sitting on homes forever. Obviously, we would not want to significantly undercut it either. So in the end, the intent is to build homes that are consistent with the market, and also more specifically with this specific subdivision, given the size of homes and the range of homes that were constructed approximately 20 years ago when the development first began.
So the factor that's driving the reduction in the square footage is if the cost of materials and labor relevant to, because 20 years ago it was cheaper to build a home with a larger footprint than it would be now. Is that correct?
Absolutely. I mean, as you can imagine, as Director, excuse me, Administrator Nabel, really, the cost of construction, materials, labor has risen exorbitantly just in the past four years in an effort to absorb that and do it in a cost-effective manner. Obviously, we control the overall cost of the home by the size of the home, given those cost-related implications.
What would be the impact down the line for purchasers, for people who purchase these homes with a smaller footprint, when they go to sell them in the future, and someone comes on and says, well, wait a minute, this house next door is, has a bigger square footage. Why am I paying for this house, you know? Could that have a negative impact on future sales for the property?
So if I understand correctly, you're asking whether the sale of these newly proposed homes would potentially negatively impact the sale of existing homes?
Well, no, I'm saying down the road, somebody looking at that area, they look, okay, here's a newer home, but it's smaller, and here's a home next door to it that's bigger. Would it have a negative impact on the future potential sales for these new properties? Because they are smaller square footage.
I'm not sure why anyone would conclude that to be the case. I mean, in the end, we're still talking about homes that are 20-ish years newer. Obviously, a newer home, you know, has newer fixtures and equipment, and therefore a higher, you know, per square foot value.
Value, okay.
In respect of, you know, the overall size of the home in relation to homes within the same year.
Okay. All right.
And what is the value that was mentioned at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, that the value of these houses that will potentially be sold?
The anticipated ASP? Low to mid-300 is probably trending more toward low.
And is that what the mark, I don't know if I'm asking you or Administrator Nabel, is that what the market is bearing for the price, the value of those homes now over there?
I'd probably have to check with, with Colleen Davis, the Township Assessor, because she just did the quadrennial analysis, but, I mean, ultimately, if they didn't think, they're experts in this, they're not going to put, invest the capital in that if they didn't do the market research that it sold for that. I mean, if they invest and they're able to get high twos, I don't, I mean, I would still support that development on that. They're taking the risk on whether they can sell it at those prices or not, based on their research, so, you know, I don't think that that would change my decision if it was, you know, if they were all, you know, high twos versus low threes.
I also spoke to a couple after the meeting that the value of their house is $175,000-ish, and they are very concerned about this happening.
Yeah, and again, down the road, that could have an impact on, so the quadrennial is every four years, the assessor has to look and assess every property within the city, and they do that based on comparables and things of that nature. But again, what happened this year is a lot of people's property values went up, but the way the tax levy works is, you know, if the city asks for $5 million, and we're going to get $5 million from the pockets of everyone in this room based on housing values, your housing value, so it's your value times the rate to get that $5 million. If your property value doubled, we ask for $5 million, the rate drops. Everyone's still paying that same amount to get that $5 million. It's not like we're going to take double the amount just because values double. To get the same amount comes to the same amount. So that's what we've seen over, over this time, is that taxes increase, but that's based on levy increases primarily. The rate has gone down because values continue to go up. So there may be corrections in market on comparable sales, but that's an every-four-year process based on market, which they would have just been reflected on in this last round. So there'll probably be a lag on any inflationary adjustments based on assessment, but again, increases in value don't necessarily, aren't necessarily a bad thing, because the rate goes. And that's what we have, we have some of the highest rates in the state and the county. The only way to reduce those rates is when values go up. And that's what's happened in a lot of other communities, is property values went way up. Zion was lagging behind, so their rates were going down, ours were still up. Our rates are now going down as well, because property values are increasing. So it's a very complicated issue, many things and factor, factors to consider, but we'd have to look at each individual property and go through a factor, but the only way to reduce those taxes is to increase our base.
And my last question is, it was also mentioned at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting that the, I don't want to say the demographic, but the people who potentially will be buying these homes in this development would be like a younger, younger age couple, like 25-ish. Is, how does that compare to the people who are currently, have increased home ownership in this city of Zion? Is that comparable?
As far as who is buying now?
Who's buying?
What we're seeing, we're seeing a majority of purchasing being younger families. What we're seeing, we're seeing a majority of purchasing being younger families. A lot of, a lot of the demand is based on the younger generations coming into the market. Some of the units are going to be three bedrooms, some are going to be four, um, because you, you end up with a lot of older generations, include myself in that, have bought their homes, they're in place, they don't, you know, if, if you bought a $200,000 home 10 years ago, you might be able to sell it for 400 now, but then you're going to have to, to get that same house now, you're going to spend 400. So you don't, you see a lot of people just kind of staying in their homes that they're established in. And the new demand is being driven by the growth of younger families, look relocating for jobs as they try and get started, or just new market demand as everyone kind of lives longer, stays in place. You have less seniors that are going into homes, you know, retired homes, independent living, they're staying in the homes that they bought and lived in longer. So that's creating a supply issue on the back end. You have people looking for houses, but you don't have as many people moving out of houses, which is what's driving a lot of this demand now that we're starting to see developers peek their heads out again. Um, probably 10, probably 15 years ago, it's been that long, 2010, when kind of the housing market crashed, houses were going for $25,000, $35,000 around here. And development just died because they said, well, if it's going to cost me $100,000 to build a home, we're never going to catch up to that until the market recovers. Well, then market prices recovered, but that was matching still the cost. And then as market prices kept going, then we had the spike in supplies and labor and things. So prices were going up by as much as it still costs to build. This is the first time we're starting to see that that margin, that gap is, is worthwhile where they can get a price more than what it costs to build. So that's, that's what's been where a big delay of this has been. The demand is there, younger families, there's no supply. That's what we're trying to relieve.
May I add something? I think the other thing too, Commissioner, and I've talked about this over the last seven years, uh, several years, is with the housing market and, and across going north, the prices have gone up so significantly that buying a home here has been more attractive to people, which is, which has been good, which is one of the reasons we've overturned our rental rate from going from 40% homeownership to 60% over, over the last several years. So I think that's, and, and we need, I think we need a newer housing stock in town, too. That's, we, we've, uh, we've got, look, as I drive around every day, you, you all live here, uh, we've got an older housing stock. So I think to get some fresher, newer houses in is, is good for our economy. That's just, just my humble opinion.
Mayor, I mean, I get just a couple of things. First, in response to Commissioner's comment concerning the age demographic, I don't have the benefit of the hearing transcript or the meetings in front of me, but I believe when I stated with respect to anticipated age for these homeowners that it would be like mid-20s, mid-to-early 30s. But I meant by that, I think I also stated at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings that historically, approximately half or more of our homeowners are first-time homeowners, which generally fall within that age range. For example, just, uh, yesterday, I saw a report that identified the first-time homebuyer percentage for the Chicago Division as being 56% for last fiscal year. And this fiscal year to date, which by the way, began October 1st, is also 56%. With respect to the home size, I just want to mention that, you know, again, Dave, what we're looking to do here is as closely as possible, and our current market conditions generally replicates the same development or, or same manner and ultimate build-out of the development as the city contemplated more than 20 years ago when additionally approved this, this PUD back in 2003. The, the home size ranges that tier-pointed homes constructed and offered for sale at that time began at 1,600 square feet. That's approximately the same thing as what we're talking about here as the minimum of the free plans that we intend to offer. Um, and then, you know, lastly, with respect to new housing stock, I, you know, as you stated, Mayor, it, it's difficult to imagine that an investment of new housing stock into the city would not prove to be beneficial to the city or the overall valuation of city properties, as well as the availability of housing stock to new and existing residents.
Any additional questions?
David, in your, in your opinion, is an increase in the EAB favorable or unfavorable to the city?
It's favorable.
All right.
I guess I'll just add, so Administrator Nabel covered, covered a lot of it, but since I am making the motion and, and voting for it, just, so, Commissioner Holmes, the research that I found supports what's being stated here, uh, that this is where the market is trending, um, based on the size of families. And, you know, given Zion, uh, it does, you know, tend to lean toward a starter home type community. Um, and so looking at this slight decrease in the square footage, uh, didn't raise any, uh, red flags for me, uh, looking at that subdivision. If they're going to keep it aesthetically, you know, similar as, as far as the front, um, with some of the updated techniques of building, uh, you can gain a lot more efficiency in a slightly smaller square footage. Um, and seeing how that plays out across the total market, um, that's why I decided to be, to vote in support of it. Um, and then additionally, in terms of the concerns about, uh, the sales price for it, uh, so the assessed value and the market price, they're intended to be decoupled. They do tend to follow one another. Um, and based on my research there, uh, like Administrator Nabel mentioned, those wouldn't be immediate increases. So you would see a slight drag over time, but the assessed value is going to be looking at the average over the last three years. Um, and so there, there should be some controls in place that there's not, you know, a, a shock to folks', uh, property values or, uh, tax values. So I hope that helps.
So we've had a motion and a second, questions, comments. Uh, any additional comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Epstein.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries four zip and an abstain. Item 8B considers zoning docket 24Z4 in ordinance requesting a variance of section 10 dash 49. Two of the Zion municipal code to reduce the minimum foundation requirement from 1,000 square feet to not less than 570 square feet per Director Iansen through Administrator Nabel. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
Nothing more than that.
Nothing more than, all right. Um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by Fisher, Commissioner Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Epstein.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries four zip. Item number C, is there a motion for requiring, uh, consider zoning docket 24Z4 in ordinance requesting a variance of section 102, 49, seven of the Zion municipal code to reduce the minimum garage sizes from 500 square feet to not less than 425 square feet with no measurements less than 18, uh, feet six inches per Director Iansen. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval. Is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Fryerson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Epstein.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries four zip. Item number 8D, consider zoning docket 24Z4 in ordinance requesting a variance of section 82 dash 156 of the Zion municipal code to keep the impact fees the same as in the subdivision PUD per Director Iansen. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to keep the impact fees the same as in the PUD.
Motion by Fisher?
Second, but I want to open up discussion.
Second by Fryerson. Uh, questions or comments?
Administrator Nabel, so looking at this, uh, we ended with 2023. Is there a reason we didn't just flow with this extension based on CPI adjustment into 2024?
Um, the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics doesn't do their annual adjustment for inflation until either April or June. Um, so the, the language that was in the PUD was based on the annual, based on that item. So we just went off the most recent, which was 2020, June 2023 released, released back there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, we had a first and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Epstein.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries four zip. Item number 8E, consider approval for waiver of sprinkler system for property at 1903 Sheridan Road, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is requested, uh, submitted for Chief Streed. He's requesting an approval for a waiver of sprinkler system requirement following a change in use inspection and occupancy application for 1903 Sheridan. This is in reference to section 903, 62, quote, point three of the 2006 International Fire Code. As amended by section 3443 of the City Code regarding sprinkler system requirements for expansion, interior alterations, or remodeling of occupancy, quote, point three states a project that entails a change in use group for any part of the building would kick in a sprinkler system requirement. Um, we had something similar to this in, I think it said in 2022 at 1905 Sheridan, where you're basically looking at almost residential-type buildings where there's a small number of people in, in each facility based on their operations, their business operations, dropping four or five people, um, where it created a significant undue burden on the business. This code was primarily for larger businesses where there might be large gatherings of people or large numbers of employees or customers. We approved the waiver back in 2022 on 1905. This follows the same, um, same premise. As you can see in the affidavit, that's attached, um, that this was a real estate and tax business, at most no more than five clients in the office at a time. Windows are, are all around, smaller spaces, emergency were to happen, their windows are less than four feet, there's egress requirements. So, um, based on all of those conditions, uh, the chief is recommending an approval of the waiver.
All right. Is there a motion? Make a motion that we approve this waiver. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number 8F, consider approval of purchase of squad cars in the police department per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor McKinney and Commissioners. I respectfully request a budget amendment, request of $122,250 for the purchase of three police interceptors squad cars. Seth Research located new 2024 squads at a discounted rate from the current 2025 model year. Uh, request approval from, of the quote from Sutton Ford as presented. This purchase would eliminate the need to budget this purchase in the next fiscal year. So this is in lieu of the next budget year. Uh, this budget amendment does not include the outstanding costs. Those details in quotes would be presented with a additional budget, budget amendment or will be ratified in the next fiscal year. I can, do you have any answer questions on this? I know this, this sound weird while we're doing it now.
All right. Is there a motion to consider the approval of purchase of squad cars?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
This is kind of like we, we got a golden opportunity to grab these when we got them, got the chance to get them.
That's exactly it. Uh, the 2025 model year is about $7,000 more per car, and these are brand new. They'll be on the product line, I think, end, middle of March. It will be coming off the production line as a new vehicle, and it's just been a model year older.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Back to you, Chief Barton. You're on the hot spot.
Uh, wait. Player phone us for being here tonight?
I beg your pardon?
Yeah. We were just discussing player phone us earlier.
Oh, yeah. Uh, let's, let's not and say we did.
Uh, I just wanted to remind everyone, we are seeing warmer weather. Keep your eye out on walkers and bicycles. I've seen a number of people, uh, forgetting that there's also cars on the road when they're riding bikes. A guy on the way here pulled up in front of me on his, from the sidewalk, crossing the road, didn't even look. So just as a reminder that there's people getting out for exercise, walking their dogs, riding their bikes, et cetera, um, and be vigilant of those.
All right. Thank you, Chief Barton.
Try to pry me away out of department.
Director Conway?
I don't.
I'll take them anyway.
I don't, I don't really have anything, money coming in, money going out. Just a lot going on.
Okay. Good to see you.
Taddy, I'm in.
Yes.
I have two items. One on behalf of Director Roberts. Um, as many know, and there's been a lot of attention to the closure on Sheridan Road south of here. Um, this, just for everyone's information, the city's only involvement in that is because we have a water main that serves some beach park residents that were part of that project, which the state is fully paying for the replacement of that water main. Um, so we're getting a new water main for, for under the state project. But the state, the Sheridan Road is a state highway. We have no control over closure of that, how they close it, how they, uh, handle their traffic signage, things of that nature. And then the property is actually beach park. So anything related to traffic, uh, direction, redirection, detours through residential areas or not, is a beach park decision. We have no authority over that. So while it's an inconvenience going through Zion, heading south, we have no authority over how to redirect traffic that is beach park, county, and state level. So please keep that in mind as, um, people go on Facebook and want to, um, state opinions on how the city is handling things. Um...
I've only got a couple of calls about that.
Yeah. It's a non-stop thing. Um, the other item I have, and I have copies that appear for everyone, but there's going to be a town hall on February 27th at 7:00 at the Zion Leisure Center, Park District Leisure Center, that Senator, State Senator Mary Emily Allen and Representative Joyce Mason will be in attendance, talking about issues going on in Zion, um, addressing citizen concerns and just talking about the work that they're doing in the area. Everyone is welcome and invited. Um, there is a, um, link for registering for the event for tickets, but not required. They just kind of want to have a idea RSVP-wise of how many may be in attendance. But please, Tuesday, next Tuesday, 7:00, Zion Leisure Center, come out, make your voices heard. You come to the city council, uh, meetings to have your voices heard. It's a great opportunity to get involved, to go to government. And the more we have show up there, the more attention we get at the state level when we, when we need things and, um, we need to address Zion issues as well.
All right.
Nothing for me, Mayor.
All right.
Nothing?
All right, nothing?
That's the very thing I was going to mention. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Fisher?
Related to the closure on Sheridan Road, encourage everyone to patronize businesses along Sheridan Road. With the reduction in commuter traffic, they are going to take a hit in their business. So if you can stop by a restaurant, or a gas station, or anything along Sheridan Road within Zion, you know, make that extra trip over Sheridan Road because they, they are going to need our support to get through this over the next few months because it's, it is going to impact them.
Okay. Uh, no comments from me. We'll move on. Item number 10 is announcements, March 4th, uh, through 16th, March 4th through 16th, Monday, uh, through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 9 to 2. Early voting is at Zion City Hall. And that is controlled by the county. Again, we get a lot of comments from, from people about when City Hall, when the voting process happens here, they think we're in charge of it. And of course, we get a lot of phone calls and, uh, we're at the mercy of the county and, and running that. So, uh, March 4th through 16th, early voting here at Zion City Hall, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 9 to 2. March 5th, uh, the Zion City Council Meeting will be canceled due to early voting. And then we move on to March 19th at 6:00 p.m., where there's a Zion Township Board Meeting, and at 7:00, followed by a Zion City Council Meeting. and at 7:00, followed by a Zion City Council Meeting. Item number 11, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ferguson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.